Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Came across this prayer this morning, one of my prayer of the day, and I wanted to share it this evening. It was short and sweet and pertains to one of my thought processes. So, please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to wait to another beautiful day. We are grateful for the beauty and the sun and your other creations in our community, despite sometimes forgetting to proclaim our thanks. I am overjoyed by the wonders around me and thankful for our people in our community and the people we work with daily. Thank you for you in our lives. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Reading and approval of the minutes from the August 19 meeting, please.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Weider.
Second.
Second by Folkerts. Discussion. All in favor of those meeting minutes? Say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions? I think under six B, I'll put Mrs. Matheson under six B. Unless you want to wait till the very end of the meeting.
Well, I'd rather not since I haven't yet.
Okay. Alright, so we're gonna put you under six, six B instead of thirteen. So that's Ella.
Motion to approve agenda.
Okay, motion by Weider.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of setting that agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Alright, thank you. Alright, engineers report. Jared, come on up.
Hey, good evening. I'll go through just the ongoing list of projects we have here. So as far as Expedition Estates goes, did a drive-through. The loop generally is graded out. It's a subgrade. I saw there's construction staking out there. Just kind of visual inspection. They have some material testing to do still. Generally, everything below three feet in the ground has passed the density testing, compaction testing. Now we have to do one round of testing, kind of at grade. A truck roll test, which is a low tandem, they can't deflect more than this much. So it's, it's, it's just precautionary stuff. Then the gravel will go down and then the paving. And according to the conversation with those guys up there, they plan to do that roadwork here still in September, like the last week in September. So assuming that all their tests pass and everything, you know, is approved, then that, that's the schedule. That's not a city project, it's a privately developed project. You will take over the ownership of that infrastructure when it's done. So we are doing, be checking out there for any questions on Expedition Estates. There's still some lingering issues away from that site that have to get resolved, but at this point, I don't have a schedule from the contractor when that's gonna happen. Alley improvements. So walk through that area. Generally, we've got about two-thirds of the alley working done. They have to finish the alley and then the parking lot worked. But a little slower going right away, but I think now that they got away from some of those buildings, it's going a little bit faster. John's keeping close tabs on those guys for the time. I don't have a payment request for those guys. Perhaps we will in a couple of weeks. But no approvals for you guys. Any questions on that? No? Meter installation? I don't have an exact count, and I don't know if you do, Monty, or not, but we generally have about two-thirds of the community done?
One of our last count of unscheduled was like two-hundred, so we're probably eighty percent done.
Okay, so we have one general contractor. They're providing materials and scheduling installations. So I just encourage people to please, you know, when they call to schedule it, answer, help them out. Sooner we can get them done and out of here, the better. Installation doesn't take more than fifteen, fifteen minutes. Okay? If you're worried of somebody going into your house, then Public Works staff can go with in those cases as well. So just, that's generally on track because completion date is this fall on the meter replacement stuff. Control panels, they are here doing that work right now. Two control panels that we're getting upgraded with and tied into your SC system here. So that, the electrician, let's see, I talked to Jared before. They were here, he didn't catch up with them by the end of the day, so I don't know if they're done or not. But doing the, the control integration or the program is all included as a part of it. So they won't be able to leave until it's all working properly, but that'll be done in a matter of a few days, I would imagine, I think. Okay, sanitary sewer improvements. So I brought us to the plans. Generally, we, we, we decided to proceed with this this spring. We finished the plans. There, I don't know the exact numbers, forty or fifty blocks of old clay sewer mains. Ten to fifteen spot repairs that have to be done before the, before the lines can be lined. And then about the same number of manholes. So all your older sewer, your oldest parts of town, your older blocks. The manholes are in good condition, they're being left. If they're in poor condition or if the inver is in poor condition, it's getting rehabbed. So we went through all the manholes. The lines that are clay, the line is to line those blocks. Do the spot repair first and then install a liner in them, which is a trenchless rehab method. The liner does, it forms a new pipe inside the old pipe, and it just generally gives you a new plastic pipe in place without ripping anything out of the ground. It's a fraction of the cost compared to digging them up. And generally, a very, very large cost on these projects is the spot repairs for the one or two blocks that we end up replacing from time to time. The lining portion is rather cheap compared to everything else. So when we went through and did the design, had several meetings, kind of gave updates as we went. No, no surprises just yet. One contract planned to bid it on September sixteen, or twenty-sixth, excuse me. Completion date would be next year. My plan would be to show up at your meeting in October with bids in hand. We'll look at the estimate, look at the bids, and decide what to do at that point. So we'll advertise for three weeks in the Disney Tribune, the Builders Exchange, the Quest website, local newspaper. Try to attract as many bidders as we can. That's generally the best for cities. If we get three or four bids, usually means we'll get a better price. If for some reason we don't get a lot of competition, or we get bad prices, or whatever, then we'll reject bids and rebid it again in January. You know, another good time of the year to bid. But the reason we kind of decided to pull it forward right now is with these spot repairs, it's a good thing to get done in the fall and open bids or let it settle throughout the winter and then line it next year. I'm Matt, I'm here. My, my agenda item tonight is to ask for approval of the plans and authorization to advertise for bids. Any questions?
How are those spot repairs done on those areas that need them?
So we have televising, so we know where the pipe is broken. So we can, we can narrow it down pretty close. When we've got five feet or ten feet of bad pipe, they'll excavate down, dig under the pipe, cut out the bad piece, and then put in couplers and put in a new piece of pipe. And then we'll generally fill below it with rock and above it so that it's good and it doesn't settle.
Sure.
That, that's a problem. On, on some of your stuff, some of your spot repairs, a couple of them are due to bad repairs in the past or bad connections or, or compaction or whatever. Those pipes kind of shear off at those spots. And they just didn't have good materials in those days. And if something's thirty years old and it's settled this much, it's gonna break. So we have sheer resistant couplers, alloy stainless steel, so that they can't move in those spots.
Gotcha.
Yep. Super expensive to do those spot repairs, but that's why you line it to them. Yeah, that just takes care of the deterioration going forward, so we won't have to deal with this again.
Both sides.
Yep, you're welcome.
So we need a motion to move forward to set the date. Okay? Move to advertise, ask for bids. Okay, motion by Stern. Second by Folkerts. Discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Folkerts.
Aye.
Weider.
Aye.
Open hour.
Aye. Motion carried.
Just as a note, we will have required public input meeting at the, on a date in September. That is where I will walk through the engineers report with the community, exactly like you guys saw. I'll go through the maps, I'll go through the commission of the pipes, I'll go through the recommendations, and basically note that we'll be opening bids three days later, and the city commission will decide and soon, soon we'll decide in October whether we'll proceed or not. But just keep in mind with a sanitary sewer project like this, it's, it's, it's the city's respons, the city council's responsibility to decide to make these repairs. There, there's not a protest or a vote or anything like that. But it's, I mean, obviously, we need to keep the community very well informed with what's going on. So if we have to have more input meetings at other dates, then we absolutely will. Okay, so I mentioned the asphalt work up at Expedition Estates. There's about a dozen spot repair, or patches that they'll end up doing for you guys, all for various reasons. We talked about that back in June. We got that, those quotes, that should be done here this fall. Probably, I would assume at the same time last week in September, assuming their schedule maintains what they say they're on. The only other thing I have, I know in talking to Public Works and Dave, oh, we mentioned this?
Yeah.
So there, I, we know there's a leaking water main close to that Expedition Estates spot. Public Works discovered it. They monitor the lift stations, and they had a lift station that seemed to be running too much. And then they, what they did was their due diligence, then they went back and found a, a very low-usage manhole where water's running into it. It's a trickle, but there really shouldn't be much water coming from it. It seems to be coming from a vacant lot that, Monty, if you could help me, I don't know who owns that lot, but I think it was a one-time plan for a hotel.
It's a, it's a city's lot, isn't it?
If it's the west half of this area, it's owned by Williams. If it's the other portion, it is actually the city's lot, and I believe this is on the city's lot.
Okay. So there's a leaking, well, then Public Works had it for a water out here to help them figure out what's going on. And they, they do some audio testing on the, on the water system. They think it's a leak, they think they have it narrowed down to a spot. So then the water, water main we think is leaking and trickling into the sanitary sewer because they've tested the water and there's chlorine residuals in it. So we're pretty certain that it's a leaking water main. It's not a geyser, so it's not, you're paying for the water, right? So you do need to get these repairs fixed at some point. The cost of waiting and paying for water outweighed the benefit, but I don't have any quotes or anything like that. But I mean, I think it would be, I think it would be wise to at least have a conversation with Sletton while they're here because their equipment is literally parked across the street right now. And I'll just tell you, the water main leaks are not always that simple. I mean, you think you've got it narrowed down, but it could be leaking two blocks away. And the water could be following that bedding material that goes along the water main. And it just, you don't always resolve it right away. I guess you guys have to decide when is right to fix it. It's, I'm sure it's not breaking you right now, but it's something that's gotta get done eventually.
But at least there's no asphalt to dig up, there's no, no property.
To the grass.
Private property in so many states. Should be easy to get to at least.
If it's right there, it'd be really easy to get to.
So on the water leak, I guess, even though it's leaking, I guess, how's that get in the sewer?
Water just follows the path of least resistance, and a lot of times...
Is it got a bad spot too?
Well, good question. A lot of times the water main surfaces and you get a green spot in that area. And it doesn't always happen though. So those sewer and water lines are probably ten feet apart. There is a, there's a culvert running perpendicular to them. And I'm sure every pipe down there is encased in gravel and sand, and those, those can be the path of least resistance. So there could be a problem with the sewer main, but sewer mains are made to keep sewer in. They're not, they're, they're made to resist groundwater infiltrating in, but they're not watertight. And so if you look at them, every sewer pipe that we get that has joints, if we have, if the groundwater is above the sewer line, we will get some infiltration into that. And it says right on the manufacturer's data that, you know, I expect X gallons per linear foot of sewer main that we get. So, yeah.
So we have no visual sign of order would be leaking? All green grass. Surprise.
I think we should have Dave visit, Ollie, and let's...
We're gonna do some more listening and see if we can narrow it down a little bit more, whatever, because there is supposedly a good culvert buried in there and the ends are capped or whatever, but there was a culvert there.
Rural water can be really helpful though, because I think they narrowed it down, we think, to a pretty tight little spot, but...
Well, let's do it now before this January one, and now all of a sudden we got a geyser and it's, you know...
Yeah. Yeah, well, and just if you don't find it right now, like it'll bleed you a little bit, but it's, yeah.
Let's take care of it.
That's all I got.
Okay.
With the spot repairs, are you anticipating us needing to get any temporary easements or any located in locations or we gotta start procuring any temporary easements or anything like that?
Don't anticipate any.
Just didn't want to be the holdup.
I think they're all gonna be in the middle of it right away.
Perfect.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, down to six. Antoinette?
Yes.
You're up, come on up here and visit us. But first, tell us about Watford City, please, before we get into this.
I'm not sure if you realize, but we were chosen as North Dakota Main Street Summit City Chamber of the Year. So that's a pretty big deal for our community. And I was reluctant on applying again because I've applied every, every year. And I think we were nominated twice. So on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we really appreciate your continued support and forgive me for all my constant nagging about the weeds and attractive storefronts, but it makes a difference.
We appreciate it.
You get no word like this, so. And so again, this is our little sensory garden down on Main Street. I noticed today that we're kind of dying. Makes me sad. But, so yes, that was great. I, there were six hundred people there. I did a presentation, unveiled it, and they will come. I was nervous, you wouldn't think I'd be nervous, but there's seventy people in that room. And starting small with a pot of flowers to a mural, so it's like a bag of chips. You want one mural, you want one chip, and before you know it, you eat the whole bag and you eventually end up with more, more and more. So we have developed a sense of art and vibrancy more, and we owe that a lot to their Chalk Fest. And so they had a lot of questions about Chalk Fest and the murals and the sensory garden. And it was, it was a great presentation. I brought little Frida, the Fleischgeetler, my little sculpture, because we wanted to start out with her. Not known about that, but now we're going bigger, we're going with the SR-71. So a lot of people were taking pictures with Frida because they thought that was hilarious. They told us not to, not to give up on, on having Frida in our community too because it's those little quirky attractions that make a community thriving. So it was a great, great week. We were on KFYR on Monday, and I missed out on being on KFYR radio today because it's just been busy with Harvest Fest. And so that's really why I'm here, but thank you again for your continued support.
Congratulations, you put a lot of effort into it.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So yes, Harvest Fest kicks off basically on Thursday. Just wondering, I know I've already talked with Dave, we're, we're good, we got our barricades. Just found out that the stage is not gonna be here now until Saturday morning at eight o'clock, which puts a damper on everybody, but we'll, we'll make it work. Just looking to see if this is possible. If not, it's okay. But our fair association would like to pound in the tent onto the road by Hazen Motors and the parking lot, the city parking lot. Not a big tent, but just something that covers, the weather's gonna be fantastic. I don't see it being in the nineties or a hundred or whatnot, so it should be alright for us not to have a tent. But I'm just asking on behalf of the Fair Board Association, they have the, whatever it is to fill in the holes. And it's not as big as what Chalk Fest has, it's a littler guy. And just asking if what your thoughts are on that one, and they would take care of it and make sure that they would fill in the spots where they have to hammer it in. So, be honest, I...
Well, we did this before.
Okay.
Before we had that street, we done it.
Yes.
Jared, what's your, what have you, what's your experience with, like when you put those big tent stakes, like they're that long by above that, into the, into the asphalt? And fixing, fixing that afterwards with, I don't know, would you put an asphalt patch of some sort of there?
I suppose, it's supposed to be cold mix or something like that, yeah.
Have you had any experience or seeing what, if that works well or it doesn't work, or fill it with concrete, or I don't know what you'd...
Do they have, do they have to be stakes or can we put, yeah, can you put like some concrete anchors or something heavy there instead?
Nah, it's probably be stakes, because if the wind does pick, let's say it picks up to sixty miles an hour or something, something like...
I guess you can, you can use cold, it'll look a little odd. I mean, is it, is it this fall?
Next weekend.
We will have a paving company here at the end of September, so...
It'd be, it'd be on that road on the west side of Hazen Motor.
Right.
Going towards the railroad tracks.
Central, right, just south of me.
What was that?
Central and then the road or the parking lot?
We were thinking the road because the parking lot is where all the food trucks will be now. So we just installed a temporary electric panel, which will be turned on tomorrow, which will eliminate a lot of our natural pole issues. And of course, we'll, we'll rebuild whatever, we'll figure that out when it comes. But if it's a no, we are fine with that because I just was told to come and ask, so... I know, I don't want it to like harm, harm the road in any way.
I don't think it's gonna wreck the road, and I don't care what the, what it looks like if we have patches, that doesn't bother me at all either, but if Jared says no, then it's a no, but...
And by the way, more engineering was at Watford City, and I got the best pizza cutter.
I think as long as we fix it when they're here in a few weeks, it should be fine.
Okay. She said that the fair...
Cold patch stuff, but how well can you get it in a hole like a one-inch diameter?
When we do, I mean, when we do quarters, we do like three-inch quarters. And we can pound a little hockey puck style thing in there. And we're talking probably about a one-inch hole.
Yeah, so give me a little bigger than that. More than a quarter, inch and a quarter is what those are, but and, and I don't know if you can...
Our bag makes that, we use for potholes and stuff. It's pretty fine, I mean, if you work it, you can get it done in some of those holes or whatever. I don't think it would be a real big issue.
It could be fixed.
Alright.
I, and like I said, I was hoping that they would have responded back. So, oh, forty, forty by one hundred requirement says, forty by one hundred, is that...
Pretty large.
Same size with the chalk. There's gonna be about twenty.
Three stakes.
Oh, right, Monty might be today.
If they're willing to repair it and fix it right, right away.
Can I add?
I'll, I'm okay, but that's one, one way.
He apologizes, Rick, and he's combining other ways. He would be here explaining. Are you willing to, okay, anyways, willing to repair it? Repair it, right? That make sense? Or repair it, not prepare it?
Repair it. Wow.
It? Repair the holes, right? What would we do without these things?
So, okay, I'm okay with the case that says no. Jared's a eh.
Not my decision.
Are we gonna wreck the road though?
No, we can fix the road.
I'm okay with it as long as they're willing to pound some stuff in there, pack it in good.
Yeah, if they will, let's make the effort to, to fix it all.
Repair holes.
We should maybe, it says with TC's, deciding we should have a motion then to do it.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the tent with contingents that they repair the holes once they're done.
Okay, we have a motion by Weider.
Second.
Second by Folkerts. Discussion. On top of that, if, if they repair them, Jared comes to town or John and looks at it and says this is not adequate, then we have it fixed and we will charge the fair board.
Oh, that's a good one, okay.
Well, that's always only a fair thing.
He said...
It's gotta be done right.
Put some patch mix back in and tap it, tap it down.
Yeah, I know that at the county fair, they do it on their, on their asphalt.
Yes.
I've seen them do it over there too. So they did it for the Cato picnic as well, but...
If any issues, fair will be responsible.
Yep, yep. Any more, any other discussion? So Monty, you have the...
I do.
Okay. Alright, roll call.
Weider.
Aye.
Folkerts.
Aye.
Stern.
No.
Open hour.
Aye. Okay, good luck. What else, Antoinette?
It does, I'm gonna tell them they don't need that big of a tent. I'm sorry, I was thinking a little one, but I don't have anything else. You guys have?
Never formally approved, you're closing the street.
Oh, yeah. So we're closing the road from Urban Coffee House, not right there, but a little bit up above by Hazen, Hazen Motors, to WRT. WRT's old building will now be the hospitality room for the band, so that'll be blocked. And Central will be our shuttle, we're having two buses for shuttling. And so if we have that approved, it'll help us start setting up on Thursday evening already and Friday. Sorry, I don't have one now, but... Yes, so that would basically be the side roads and main to Central to Bees Cafe.
Everything's solved, or is anything we can block north?
North will be where the parade route goes. We'll just have barricades, we can move those right away.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and the parade route will go past Heritage Park and end at the Waterworks Building and Urban Coffee House, but they can continue on. We don't want them just to stop. The reason is we have other issues or other events going on closer to downtown, like right at one o'clock, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the street closure, as presented.
Okay, a motion by Folkerts. Second by Stern. Discussion. Okay, a motion by Folkert's, second, second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, it's gonna be busy and awesome.
Yes.
Thank you, Sanjana.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, six B, this is Matthias, you're up. You, you have some, um-
If you don't mind, I think I'll need just-
That's fine. You, you have, you can sit, you can sit too if you want.
I've found that speaking at the earth's law here is better to stand up.
Okay.
My complaint or observation is on two and something fireworks and loud music, if you dare call that music. I live at one thousand dollar drive, well on the north side is two hundred. These events that make all the noise are part of long main street generally. And at my house, I stand out on my porch when it goes kaboom, kaboom, in my trailer house, I can actually understand some of the words and I wear hearing aids. I think that's uncalled for. That's way too loud. And I would like to see the city put something in place ahead of scheduling these events so that these people coming know that there's a deathable level that they have to comply with. I don't know how you do that, but I think it would be fantastic. And I'm sure I'm not the only person. And I've referred when I've called the one four one four number that I've pointed out, maybe there's veterans who have some problems with loud noises. And also there are people in the nursing home that need to sleep. If you were in a conventional house, you're not going to be bothered so much by these loud blasts. With these cannon-like blasts that can blow you out of your chair. I think they're totally uncalled for. It might be someone's amusement, but it's also someone's more than just a distraction, more than a annoyance. It's worse than being annoyed. Your sense of peace is totally disrupted. Not, not necessary. The other thing, you know, with the, with the loud music, but the fireworks, which I've sort of blended in here, are crazy. And I think there's an actual fire hazard. These things go zooming up over all these asphalt roofs. I'm a not so proud owner of asphalt roof and I'd like to keep it. And I, a few years back, it was going right over my house. And the next morning I went out and I looked at a roof. Thankfully, there was nothing up there, but there were all kinds of leftovers in my yards. And I have three lots and they still got in there. That's crazy. Something needs to be done about the fireworks. I'd like to see it limited to July third, fourth, and fifth. And not several days before the fourth. That's unnecessary. If people spend thousands on this, that's crazy. Put that money into something else. If you want to be a part of the community, do something that doesn't blow it apart. And also on, on sort of the sideline, there's a lot of people who feed birds and put out bird bands for the summer birds. Those are songbirds. They are federally protected in case you didn't know. And so maybe you're harassing them. So of course that little bird is going to go boom and his tree is going like this and they smell it in the air and he's scared. Maybe it interferes with their nesting. So beware of that. That's a possibility, right? I wish I was a lawyer sometimes. But, um, those are my two points of contention. The music is too loud. It shouldn't be heard way across two hundred. And the fireworks have to be curtailed on some reasonable level. So the pyromaniacs are still happy, but the rest of us can be happy as well. I want to thank you for bumping me up on the schedule list. Thank you for listening. Do you have any questions, I mean?
Anybody?
Well, I think I probably made it fairly clear.
Yeah. No, and Monty did write it up a little bit, so we have enough paper as well from-
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, something has to be done. It's just, you have people shift work. People that do shift work, they have to have proper rest. You have medical people, they need proper rest. And maybe you kept somebody up all night and all of a sudden they have to answer an entrance call like just a few moments ago. And they're too tired. They didn't get enough sleep, so they're not functioning. Or the bus driver can't sleep and he's taking a muscle load of kids down the road and people aren't asleep. So they could teach things. It's not just whoopie doo and making a flash in the air. You have to be more considerate, more respectful. Thank you, guys.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm out of here.
Okay, enjoy your dinner.
Thanks for your time.
So then on that note, you know, and the bands and stuff. Is there a permit or something these bands just need to get or something? You know, if they play late?
I don't think we don't have a current process for that.
You know, I know they play till, I don't even know what, is it midnight? Is it midnight? Um, I was out of town the weekend that the Bison had a band a few weeks ago. I don't know if that, how late they played.
They played a little, little after twelve thirty. And it was, I don't want to say that it was unreasonably loud. I could hear what the singer was singing, but at the same time, I look at it as, this is once a year. That's not a headache yet, once a year.
I need, that's the first time he's done it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And his, his stage is pointed right at your house.
Yeah. Friday night special every Friday night.
Yeah.
Singing a little different tune.
I agree, I agree, yeah.
So.
How does that work with our noise order?
I was just gonna say, I mean-
Does it have a noise order and it's kicking in at eleven?
It does. And it's from seventy-five feet, any noise, so.
So technically it would be far, right, in it?
Right, so allowing a band in town then is-
Yeah, I'm wondering if we should have a permit.
There was some kind of permitting to exempt them from that or something.
Okay, something to look at and get some information about.
Cause it has to be a violation, that noise ordinance every single time.
Yeah.
That's a great point.
Are we gonna be in violation?
No. No, it's something we're gonna look at towards the future, probably. And that's, you know, if a band, if we know if a band is going to be filling in town, then if it's Tim or if it's Anthony Matt or, or if it's out at Jimmy's or whatever, you know.
Or even Pocket Park if they decide they're gonna go that way.
Right, and they, and they don't want to, no, but.
Well, we're gonna have eleven thirty, by the way, Saturday. They're on a strict schedule.
Eleven thirty.
But as a matter of fact, that noise ordinance, like loud music doesn't have a time period. I mean, it's anything that's, you know, can be heard audibly from over seventy-five feet away. So even, even if it is a band playing at the park, that would still apply.
Do we ever see noise ordinance violations in here that are dealt with?
I used to hammer it on at all times.
Every once in a music parties at-
Well, like even, even a car going down Main Street being louder or a Harley, do we ever-
Loud is different because that's, that's just, it's different.
Oh, it's different.
Yeah, it's because I own a Harley, so it's different. I suppose the city would be the same.
And so they can hear it, so.
Yeah, well.
I don't wanna say I have seen a few in here, but not many.
Yeah.
We, we almost have to be able to catch them.
I don't, I, what, the point I'm making is that we have a noise ordinance. It's almost like cities have an ordinance that says it's against a lot of spit on the sidewalk. You know, it's, it's on the books, but it's rarely dealt with. But I think when we were dealing with a band in town or something, I think we could, I don't know, Monty can send us some, let us listen with others, community to see if they do anything with permitting and, okay. Yeah, so I think it's a valid thing to look at.
Cause yeah, my thing would be what happens if there is a time and a place where you do need to enforce that ordinance? And they go, well, they're not held accountable, why, you know? I mean, granted, it'd be outside of discretion at that point, but nonetheless, it's kind of hard to justify something like that to them when, you know.
Absolutely.
And you gotta, you gotta develop, you gotta think about the phones and track needs too, with the loud speaker.
Yeah, those are done by nine o'clock at night.
Nothing up to eleven street and you can hear the-
You can, you can, you can hear-
Just saying, if you're aware in case of complaints.
Yep, absolutely. That's, it's all part of it.
Well, they better put in lots of earplugs.
Yeah, it's gonna be loud Saturday night. Um, Mrs. Matheson was here five, six years ago, I think, at one time to express her opinion. And I think since then, we have shortened the timeframe a little bit on fireworks since she was here last. Limiting into the third, fourth, and fifth. I don't know, I'm not-
Problem with it is our, our community is strong on the shift work. So if that falls during their four days on or three days on, it makes it awful tough for them, you know? I, I get where she's coming from, but we gotta look at the entire town, not just focusing on a few people.
With that being said, would there be a way to set up, I think I read something about some kind of, holding some kind of public input meeting or something like that, advertise it out, like, hey, if you have any concerns about, or any input on the firework ordinances, you can come this date and time and narrow those concerns or something to that.
You have two public meetings every month.
Well, I was unaware of that. I mean, but I mean, obviously. But something to specifically address the fireworks, I think that may, that may attract more people than, cause I'm caused, I'm still, I'm hearing it every time I'm out in public. It seems like somebody like, what are you gonna do something about them doing fireworks? And it's like, show up to a meeting, but does anybody ever?
Well, and I'm glad she did.
Absolutely.
I'm not in favor of shortening the time, the dates are selling from what we have now. But that's just my opinion. If you guys want to go further, that's-
Well, me, I just don't want to go back to state laws.
And that, that's longer than what we, we need, correct?
Yeah. Ten days.
Yeah, ten days, yeah. You didn't hear that though.
It's gonna be somebody out there at the walk or they want eggs at your hand.
Alright, we're gonna move on to seven, eight. Um, I'm sorry, unless there's any other discussion about that right now, um, move forward. Alright, forestry ordinance revision. This will be the second reading of this. Um, unless anybody has any concerns or wants to add changes that we already have, but Monty.
Um, I did email Monty, I believe it was on Friday, but he had already went home about adding another tree to our list, um, the wild black cherry. I planted approximately two hundred of them out at the farm and they've been growing fantastically. So ASC office is actually kind of watching my trees, cause that's not one of the trees that they generally push around here, even though it is a native to this area. And they are, they're, well, the oldest ones are four years old now and they gotta be at least ten feet tall. Um, they're doing absolutely fantastic.
Do they make cherries and flowers or?
Little tiny ones, almost the size of choke cherries, um, which they do have a pit in them, just like choke cherries do. Seems like the birds love them. So we did email back down at the forestry office to see if we could get that added to our boulevard list. I hope we have not heard back on that yet.
I would, I would stay away from that. I would make it a tree that's approved to plant in our community, but I don't want on the boulevards. I think that they're messy.
Well, we got flowering crab apples on the boulevards.
But that's not what we're planting more of, that's, those are doing.
Yeah, it's still on the list.
Yeah, I'm not real in favor.
I'm not in favor either, but it's-
Trees on the boulevard sidewalks, I mean, the ones that drop on the streets are a bother to pick up. I don't think they're on there yet.
Crab apple, numerous varieties, flowering crab apple. They don't know, but these are fruitless.
Oh, so crab apple is fruitless.
And we just said, we had a citizen right across the street, Major, he's pretty much, um, this is, uh, you know, she, she actually paid to have a different tree planted, cause it's so, so messy, yeah. And all those little cherries are just slimy and, so with wasps and whatever else, so. But I, I, I think it's, I'm nothing against a tree in town. I just don't think, I don't, I don't want to see it on the boulevard, that's all.
Okay.
Dave?
Yeah, fruit trees on the boulevard, I mean, we've had, or I've had people call and complain about some of them that are, they're dropping their food on the sidewalks. You can't hardly walk on them or even off the street. Then we come by, have to try to sweep them up or whatever. They're nice trees, but not really a boulevard tree if they're gonna drop fruit.
So, um, back to the ordinance for the second reading. Does anybody have any other thoughts or changes?
Or do you just want to table it until you hear back from them? It's up to you then.
We can table it then?
Would rather not table it, cause we do have people that are wanting to plant, well, fall planting, it's like right now.
Mm-hmm. And that's the best time?
It is. So if we push it out, you know, farther, we're limiting that, well, we couldn't get planted yet this year.
Okay.
I think we can just scratch that tree off the boulevard list.
Off the boulevard, yeah, but not this, in the community they're like, yeah, okay.
So I guess with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve this ordinance revision.
Make motion by Weidrich for the second reading. Second, second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich, aye. Stern-
Aye.
Folkert's-
Aye.
Over and out.
Aye, motion carried. Alright, water sewer garbage. Jason's not here for streets, Dave?
Well, we finished up painting, uh, straights and that kind of stuff. Been doing some grinding or whatever and I'm mainly getting things ready for Harvest Fest.
Were we getting in the alleys at all?
Yeah, abandoned slowly getting in some of them or whatever, so we got a few more that we gotta touch up.
Okay, thank you. If anyone's questioning?
Do you, I don't have anything to report. I just have one quick follow-up. Where are we at with those impounds in the city lot? I don't know whether they're looking.
Notices, the notices have gone out. I haven't, we did have one paid. I haven't, uh, we're about to schedule the auction for the other ones now.
We're at that timeline now?
Yeah.
Okay. So we should be, we should be able to start moving those items soon?
Yeah.
Okay.
We do have, we'll put them up for bids. I guess we're gonna bid or?
No, we're gonna do, we're gonna do an auction. We could just do an auction.
Auction?
Yep. And we gotta be there.
Okay. Can we make sure we advertise it on Facebook and not just the newspaper?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, not a problem.
That's alright. Thank you.
Okay, police fire.
Um, I have some run reports from the police department. Officer Byers had seventy for the month of August. Officer Anthony Malberg had twenty-five. Officer Samantha Malberg had forty-two. Chief Wolf had twenty-three, which Chief was also out on vacation. And last month I did talk about the speeding stuff that I went over. This last month, we had twenty-one, um, speeding calls to service. So that's four times higher than the last three months put together. So I'm not sure why those three months were so low and then all of a sudden we quadrupled in one month.
I like that number.
I do like that number.
I do like that number. Um, thank you, Chief, for bringing it up to your officers. Let's try to keep that going if we can. This weekend was a busy weekend on the fire department. We had three grass fires all on Saturday. One of them being a hundred and twenty acres, so just like people do, be cautious. We don't have any burn bans going yet. But I did burn the tree pile on Sunday night and I did have two spot fires due to that. Luckily, I did have a fire truck out there and was able to put them on myself pretty quickly, but it's getting extremely dry extremely quick. And um, so just want people to be cautious of that. That's all I have. Do you have anything you wanna add, Chief?
Just, uh, say I was on a pursuit and Siren went out. So they took care of that, but they punctured a condenser at Electronic Communications and they said notice that they would have paid for that. Once safe motive gets in, they would take care of everything on the bill that way.
Oh, caution.
Which vehicle was that? Was that a light vehicle or?
Night vehicle.
We have any update on, have you picked up? Nothing, it's pretty quiet.
When's the last time we've inquired any idea?
Uh, I think it was last week.
Uh, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
A month and a half out from July yet, cause they ordered some wrong parts, so.
Of course.
And historically, like with us, they just showed up one time. And it's like, oh, we got them now, so. Just so everyone's aware.
Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, HCD Buster's not here. He's retired now. Um, they did hire Myra Savical. She's been an HCD director. Uh, Myra lives between here and Pick City. She's, uh, worked for Union Bank, she's worked for Union State Bank, she's done some real estate in the past, she's done some insurance in the past. Smart lady. Um, she just say this is not, um, her passion and if, you know, there's if something happened where someone moved to town, um, she's willing to, and then wants that job or is, it has experienced that job. Uh, it's more of a burning desire for that job. She's willing to step aside, but she's kinda doing us a favor as well by filling that role. And so she's a, she's a great, um, person to fill in for it, so. Just wanna bring you up to speed on that. That's all I have. Uh, nothing under ten, eleven, or twelve, or public comments. We're done with that as well, so. Down to approval of the bills.
Motion to approve bills is presented.
Motion by Weidrich. Second by Folkerts. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich, aye. Folkerts. Aye. Stern. Aye. Holman Howard.
Aye, motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thanks everybody for coming.